All right, Jason, it's up to you.
Call of committee of order, December twenty seventh, seven oh five. We stand for pledge.
Welcome to the legions to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Set it over. I guess we're ready to nominate, right?
Uh, should you appoint an assistant secretary?
We have to have the secretary for the meeting.
Should I do that, or should we?
First.
Do we have?
Yeah, this way, we start taking the... Do we have thoughts from the audience?
Uh, just a suggestion that right now you just appoint someone to take over to this meeting. And then you can, you know.
Are you raising your arm to what?
Any interest, I guess, Charlie?
No.
To the ballots.
Just, just because.
Wait, wait, no. You don't want to try to be there. I will appoint Charlie Harris as the assistant secretary. Take notes here.
For the meeting.
For the meeting, yeah. Now, I'm going to do the nominations for president.
I'd like to nominate Ray Woods for council president of the borough.
I second that.
Thanks, well. This is why we're going to have discussion.
If your discussion is that, no, you don't want it, then nobody will want this good.
Well, uh...
Now, what are your thoughts, Ray?
Before, before everybody votes.
Just one point would probably be to ask if there are any other nominations.
Right.
I mean, we don't have the answer, but it's still a good idea.
Right.
Go through the right protocol. Is there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Jack Doughton for president of the council.
Second.
Is there any other nomination? That's passage of the law.
There's any other nominations?
So, close the floor to nominations. I close the floor to nominations.
I close the floor to nominations.
And?
And?
First, for the first nomination.
Vote for the first nomination.
Which was Ray.
Which was Ray Wood. Jared?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Stane?
Ted?
No.
Upstayed.
And then you tell me that you see that it was Kerry or Ray.
It's Kerry.
Yes.
So, we don't vote on the second nomination?
No.
Because there's no need. Okay.
Jason made the motion to appoint me as assistant secretary who, who, uh, secondary.
No, he's appointing.
Oh, he's appointing.
They are just in front of you because we do have.
Oh, okay.
That's why I get it.
See, I promised you.
Can I turn it over to you?
All right. Um, all right. So, then, I guess we have to accept nominations for the vice president of council.
I'm going to, uh, Jack Doughton.
Do we have a second? We start the vote. Okay. Are there any other nominations? All right. Are there any other nominations for vice president of council?
I would like to nominate Ted Bateson.
Okay. So, we have Jack Doughton and Ted Bateson. Are there any further nominations for the vice president? All right, close the floor. I'm going to close the floor and open it up to a vote for Jack Doughton as vice president of council. Start with you, Jared.
Brian.
Kristen?
No.
Gail?
Are you Christian?
I'm Jewish.
Aye.
Yeah, I'll change.
Uh, yes. And I vote yes. So?
Close, so moved.
Close, so moved. Jack Doughton will be vice president of the council. Um, all right. Uh, committee assignments, uh, by council president. I'd like to, do I have to appoint or open it up? I really?
No, you just appoint. We'll move. That's all you do.
The president of council.
Yep.
So, you guys get ready.
I'm not saying I have to pop us through now, so I don't know that I have anybody to appoint. Okay, and I table it for the next meeting?
Yes, you can.
Okay. I would like to table committee assignments, um, until the January third regular scheduled meeting.
You mean, uh, do you have a secretary?
We do not have a secretary.
No, I'm sorry, but do you have someone who is interested in doing it?
No, not yet.
All right.
That is going to be something that we're...
Well, I'm, I have a short-term solution for that.
Right. I'm thinking of a short term until we can then bridge that and find somebody to work with the peer program. That's the plan.
Right.
All right. Uh, next point of order, uh, all council members, um, and the public, I have... You know what? One other thing I want to add about the committee assignments. I'll follow up with all the council members and interview you for your interest in what parts of the committees you'd be interested in. Jared? All right. Uh, next item, twenty twenty-three council meeting minutes. I think I've provided all the council members and the public with dates. Um, if there, if there are no, um, your... If there are no errors or corrections, um, I'd open the floor for a motion to approve this. And to run an advertisement to the, for the public.
Both of you have a vote.
Oh, I can't do that, okay.
You can, but it's clear it will be a...
Nope, that's fine, I like that. This is my first time making this.
I know, you're doing a good job so far. Paul Eaton. I make a motion, we accept the twenty twenty-three meeting schedule as written.
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh...
Then you say the motion has been made and seconded, you need to make it seconded.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded. Um, can we have a vote on that? Start with Jared.
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Cam?
Yes.
Jack? Ken, yes. I vote yes as well. Passed unanimously. Um, okay, we have an agenda item here for bank account signing authority. Unfortunately, the bank has been unavailable for communication. Jack has reached out to them multiple times, um, so I'd like to table that.
What bank is it?
That, Homestay, Conestelle National Bank. Like, we don't have the contract, we don't have any of the files, they haven't been turned over by the other secretary.
Well, you now have the ability to go and retrieve that, to stop that information. Um, they can't really avoid your call now.
Or you can go in person. We've done that before. We've done that in person. And that's what you do because the president, vice president, you can go in person and go to the bank and say, you know, we are the legal representatives of Struck of Borough Council. We want all pertinent records and everything that goes with it. Instead of just calling us, you know, make sure the person's there.
How'd that work out with Wayne then, last year?
Oh, only in person.
Bring a copy of the minutes. Right, and Charlie, I, yes, you have no idea what we might do.
So, you have a copy of those minutes from that meeting.
Yeah, so, uh, we have to follow up with the secretary and the assistant secretary who designed the key. Um...
Did you receive the documentation you requested? No.
No, we haven't received any.
It's a nice meeting. It's a nice meeting. It's a nice meeting. When you're not in question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because now you guys are official. And the minutes will tell the bank they don't have any person at it. Because you're officially representing the borough.
Am I mistaken in thinking that, like, there's only one person at the bank that we can talk to? Like, is that how it works?
Apparently. Yeah, apparently we have represented whoever signed it because it's part of the trust program or something.
I did pick up the mail that was in the post office, and there is something here from Conestelle. From the bank.
Let's open it up.
Because if that gentleman's out of town for it, basically, the, the question would be, why are certain bills that were voted on in our last meeting not paid and some things aren't paid?
We don't know that for sure. Uh, Thompson Holt said they haven't received it yet, so if the bank pays it, it's all left, we don't know that.
The tax collector has not received his pay, but the council members received their pay. So, and Thompson Holt says they have not received their payment, all that was voted on on the same day. So, what is going on?
Well, for right now, I'd call him, pay him. Yeah, call me out if I don't.
No, no, no. But that's why...
Out of my stranded truck.
That's why I'm questioning, like, why, like, we shouldn't only be able to talk to this one person. Like, these bills need to be paid.
Well, and here's the suggestion. The suggestion is you're working out from some, a bunch of things that you have to do to establish your government.
Right, right.
So, take those things first, get them all out. Secondly, when you do have minutes, then, uh, Jack and Ray can go right to the bank and say, we have a copy of the minutes. And then they can get those answers, because otherwise it's just congestion.
But I do think that the fire, the tax collector doesn't care, it's never, I mean, he does care in a lot of ways. But the fire tax is, that, that needs to be taken care of.
Yes.
This is the... But the minutes have to be with a seal and sign. They have to be official.
Previous minutes, and then they can go to the bank.
Right. Official minutes that are, with the borough seal and sign. It can't be just a paper that you don't, you can say.
Yeah, so we, we, we've gone to the bank without approved minutes, just with the minutes that were reported. And bank, previous bank, uh, wouldn't let us do anything, right?
Well, you're all elected now. Thank you.
And as long as you have those minutes from the night, they really legally have to.
Right.
And like I say, if they give you a problem, I would go to the top down.
I agree.
Because you'd call the president and talk to him about it, and I'm sure he'll make a few phone calls, and they'll be very, um, congenial to your wishes.
Okay, no, that makes sense.
And if you have a... Do you have a state after all?
No, the former assistant secretary of the council.
But I want to see this, this...
Meetings are returned by Thursday and are business.
I want to see this council acting as an entity with the power that they have to try and help what's going on in this borough. That's without, I mean, assistance is fine, but this borough has to stand the council on its...
I would recommend just first get this established and then...
Right, and then take care of all these things, absolutely.
Gail, thank you, thank you very much, I agree with that. Okay. Let's move on to the, uh, SMT program. Now, I have a resolution on here, and I had prepared a resolution. Jim and I had had a conversation slightly, um, and maybe, uh, you have something to add to this.
Sure. We ran through the program, I told you to make it.
I open the floor for Jim Rowe to present the SMT program to the council.
Financial... It's a brand new program, brand new. It hasn't come anywhere in the Northeast. It's been tried in the Southwest, western part of the state, it works really well. I can describe it as a mini stamp. The stamp is the program that we discussed before everything went to fruition. And that's a more detailed, a little more expensive too, program that we have that would have some match for the borough. We have this new program that we've been using in the Southwest, and, um, we would like to offer it to you. And what it does is just the financial piece of the stamp program. The stamp program looked not only at the finances, they were looking back at least five years. But they not only looked at the finances, but they looked at the operations of the borough. But you guys don't really have any operations. You don't have a police force. You really don't have a public works department. You know, you're smart in buying services for flower and insulting, and you're smart in buying the services for cutting the grass. And it's way cheaper than having actual employees. So, because you don't have those two key things, this program would allow us to send in a consultant, say consultants, to do the stamp program and do this. And the best part for you is that it's completely state-funded. So, it's only a teeny tiny part of all of our, um, our taxes together that go into funding this program. But the fu, the program is designed, it's, like, takes place over a five-month course of time. And it would involve regularly scheduled meetings, I think once every month, right, Lisa? Yeah, so it would provide you with the same outcome of your financial piece as the stamp program, but it would be no charge to you. Also, during that time, Lisa and I would still be able to work with you. And Lisa and I, or Lisa or I, would come to these meetings of this mini stamp program. And if I have still phone service, I'll pitch you the name of the program event. Um, but it is something we'd like you to consider because we think it's probably the easiest way to get you guys some, some answers and some assistance as you guys form your government and work, make your government work. Because it's how we know that you guys have been working off together. We know that. If not, then they are in care of you.
You said the mini program would be a little more expensive, would you be glad to have that?
No, it's no expense to the borough.
No.
Stamp is a little more expensive because I think that a stamp for you would be about forty thousand dollars. And we, oh, boy, forty thousand dollars. And I'm trying to do the math in my head, and I stink at math. It would end up probably costing the borough about four thousand dollars. You'd become thirty-six thousand dollars. But this has no, it has, first of all, it doesn't have any pieces that you may not need. And also, it'll be, because I know that one of the primary hinges is the finance. We don't know where you're going to invest it. We have to guess, but we don't know for sure. And the stuff that you're telling me about going to the bank and the bank vote, I don't know that that's even real. But I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know. But I think this program would be helpful. Did you find the name?
No, I can't get service up here.
That's because you'll have to...
Does anyone else have any questions for Jim on the mini stamp program? I have a couple of questions. So, um, we, we, we've talked generally in the past about, uh, auditors and helping the borough with the audits. And we know that the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audits are at D C E D and kind of held up, but we don't know why.
They were held up because there was a note of affection to the part of our department that handles that that said that the audits weren't real, that the, the audits themselves were tainted in some way, shape, or form.
Interesting.
So, that's what's holding them up. So, what, just what needs to happen is, and I'll have any flag, I have to check, I don't think you're flagged, meaning, I don't think that you won't get your, um, any of the things you have to save.
Liquid fuels.
But your liquid fuels.
Liquid fuels is significant. I mean, it matches, it matches our budget.
It does. So, but I'll make sure that if there is a flag, that it's removed.
Okay.
Because you guys are going to...
Because we, because, because then we also have an issue with the twenty twenty-one audit that has not been done. And we can talk a little bit about, um, you know, getting a CPA to kind of come in and kind of really look through and try and make sense of what's happened.
That's with that mini stamp.
So, the mini stamp will do that. Like, that's the assurance that I really need.
Got it.
Because we really need to understand, and, and it's not just last year's audit that's not done. It's, it's the, the, some of the previous audits, um, to really kind of understand what is, what has transpired, how our finances got to the situation, how the money's got spent in ways that they got sent.
And more importantly than all of that, although I'm not saying that's not important, because it sure is, but you need to know how much you have that you can spend this year on the necessities of your borough. I know that you had, the biggest item I saw, um, there was street improvements, maybe, on your budget.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't know, um, I didn't email it to you.
Really, like, for our liquid fuels fund?
We do have enough, they, they're going to pretty well wash themselves, like, you know,
as long as we don't get in and have some big expense.
Right.
We can do the wood, summer maintenance, winter maintenance, and pretty well do it within the twenty-five, twenty-seven.
Would you serve it out? Can you do the streetlights?
Yes.
The streetlights would come on.
It's like a hundred.
I have a question. You're talking about s- street improvements, what streets? These are all, other than our dirt roads, these are state roads, so what, what street improvements are you talking about?
So, my understanding of that budget was that street improvements refers to maintenance of the, uh, dirt roads.
Okay, so that would be road improvements rather than street. I don't know, please set this on here. What number is that?
Is that the road bridge maintenance?
It was the one.
Change of forty-three eight, four thirty-eight. And that would be a...
Yeah, that's not, okay, that's, when you said streets, that's why I questioned it. I have a question for you, Jim.
Sorry.
Okay, these, we're talking about the audit that were flagged, excuse me, that were flagged. Was the previous council notified that there was a problem with them? And was, was they literally, legally notified so that they were aware there was something wrong with the, with those audits?
That part of my department sends out notifications.
Okay, so then they were aware that there were, there were faults in the stuff? That was my question.
Well, Jim, I was the mayor that was making the complaints right along. And I never got nothing back, and I have repeatedly asked council and Bujay if they had anything that was bad, but they didn't. They knew nothing.
It wouldn't go to the mayor because of the way the, the borough from government is set up? It would go to the, um, the chief officer who was president of council? So, it would have gone to president of council, then whoever was at that time your secretary? Because you had just a straight secretary at some point.
Well, that was the secretary's daughter or mother that did the audit. So, we, we know the Travis girls were involved in all of that. And we really need to have this just blossom out and find out what really went on and who's going to be helping with what.
That will happen with this, that will happen with this, this mini stamp assessment, which is called the financial health assessment.
Okay.
They will go through all of it.
Okay. Um, and, and so, I have, I have two more questions. One second. Okay. Chair recognizes the public. Yes, Dan?
Pardon?
What were you going to say?
Oh, um, you were talking about, uh, the paperwork that you did not get the D C E D sent, is there any way that you guys can request copies of everything that was sent from the nation?
I could certainly find it all. Okay. Seems like, seems like a reasonable request.
Absolutely.
Should I find out? And we probably have access to that, but if not, Michael will help us. Yeah, if I know.
All right. Chair, person recognizes the public.
Just a reminder that your, uh, person who did your audit is also not just the mother of the secretary and treasurer, but she was also the assistant secretary for the borough.
Yes.
Who did your audit?
Thank you for that, thank you for that. Portraying. Um, but, okay, so, so I'm just passing the, the SMT program. I have a couple of other questions. Uh, the, the, the mini SMT sounds too big for...
Financial health assessment.
Financial health.
And if you want to vote to opt for those applications to that program, you can. Is that a change of minds that we have?
Yeah, well, that was my next, that was one of my next two questions was, what do we need to do to forward, uh, with that program? Because that's too good to be true, right up our alley. Um, second, by accepting that, does that limit our ability to take advantage of the broader S T M program if we need to?
No, it, and remember, you're the test case up here, so we have a little more breadth.
I like it.
Yeah. But it would, if you needed the full stamp, you could still do the full stamp, but a big part of it will already be done. Because you'll have the financial piece of it done, and you'll have a, uh, five-year forecast done. And then if you need more from the stamp, then we can do that.
Okay.
And Emily Taylor, the stamp program, Strategic Management Planning Program, was always set up and well-founded by our legislators. Um, it, it was, it's well-funded because they recognize that there are a lot of issues in the twenty-five hundred communities that we have, municipalities that we have. So, it's set up to be as flexible as possible. We've done a lot of weird, crazy things with it. Um, we helped to cover the river's water system after a winter when the, uh, water was shooting up, that the pipes were freezing, literally, and they were shooting up through the asphalt. And like, you know, and they were, it was bad. So, we were able to give them funding to help them figure out if they could sell it, how much it would be worth, and then finally help them to sell it. So, that's, that's very unusual, because normally speaking, we would be helping with, you know, maybe maybe computers for, um, for the borough, or, you know, funding, like, partially, uh, a staff member or something if necessary. Those are the typical things. But it's a very flexible program.
Okay.
But I do have assurances from my manager who is at the helm of the program that if we need to go stamp, we can go stamp.
Okay, good, okay, good. Because, because the, the borough can definitely use financial assistance, but, uh, you know, financial planning assistance then in question. However, you know, there are staffing issues and the salary that we can pay up here. So, we're really hoping to take advantage of the program to help us maximize, you know, the capabilities of the borough.
And with that in mind, I will, I will then share those, those recommendations, those desires that I have with my manager and see how we can create the assistance.
Okay. Um, council members, are there any other questions?
Yeah, I've got, you were just talking about, uh, the secretary treasurer. So, like, the secretary treasurer that we had before was making somewhere around four thousand dollars a year. So, if we could get help with D C E D, is that something we could advertise and up the ante? So, we had people that may want to come in and actually look at it as a full part-time job than just a part-time job and...
We can't do that yet. We can't do that yet, but depending upon, let's, let's first see where you are, and then see what you can afford, and then need to do that if you can. I, I talked to Ray about our peer program. So, our peer program will provide the borough with a, um, borough manager. She's also in the township manager, and I think she was in the third-class city too. But she's, looks fairly local from here. And, um, she is very interested in coming towards you. You've spoken with her.
She's great.
And she is great. And so, what would happen is we, we, there's no charge to municipality for this peer. And this peer would work with somebody, and since you don't have a secretary, it probably would be great. Because you've already started the process.
A little bit, yeah.
Okay.
I'm familiar, I can at least, I, I was studying, I took her for a while.
She's felt very comfortable with you, so, and what that would provide then is that would provide somebody who could come in and start to try to find the records, try to piece things together, and try to tell the borough council what they need to do at meetings, help with agendas, help with the financial reporting. Because you guys should get a financial report every month at a meeting. You should have that report a couple of days before, so you have the chance to digest the information in it before you have to be voting on paying bills or anything like that. And she'll help you to do all of that. I'm going to be the guys working with you, but she will actually be able to do that. So, that's, that's something I'd like to get started sooner rather than later.
Yeah, we can, like, I'm, I'm not busy tomorrow.
That was something that was going to be done until the town council took over and decided not to, anybody get on anything.
That was...
If people on council know what your duties are, it's just those who are would not allow, but those five.
There are people on this council with heavy lives experience. So, it's not like you're dealing with people that don't know.
One member of the public is going to, like, lose circulation in their hand. Did you have a, a...
Wouldn't that happen?
Sorry.
Oh.
I was wondering if there was any financial health, so this financial health assessment program, are there restrictions and limitations to what your municipality can apply for? Like, are we going to be excluded from any state or federal funds because you're involved in the program? Or do we obviously have financial issues?
No, no. In fact, we have a, a program, um, I think City Spring is the closest, Westfall Township is the closest. But we have a program called Act Forty-Seven, and that is for municipalities that are financially distressed, meaning that they have staff and they can't pay their staff, meaning that they can't pay their bills, meaning that they're, they're badly off, essentially. And we find that because they're in those programs, they change the way they do business, and then they have an... and then they have increased eligibility because they're seen as really trying to fix things. So the answer to your question is it would not continue at all. And with this council having expressed this desire to really change the way things are done here, that would be very helpful, especially if they actually follow it through.
I don't think they have a choice.
Well, I'm sure you guys can add.
All right.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I guess this probably falls probably a little bit under audit assistance, but one of the problems I had as secretary treasurer and also in the audit with Carla was we didn't have any peers to help us tell us what to do and where to find the information. Would that program help the future?
Yeah, specifically.
You're specific.
Yeah, she's very experienced.
That's, we've really could have used the. Yeah, that I think would be really helpful. There's a lot of people that are very interested and want to help participate in the community, or it's just they don't have the experience or the situation that we're in. Ted, you have one last question?
Yeah, so Jim, I guess it's sort of the same sort of question, but risks to the borough for involving this program? Like, like you said, with the audit, they could flag it. Like, is there any risk that we could lose funding from the state?
No, because right now, you probably are flagged because the previous two, as Farley and Alton knows only too well, your two years are flagged because the first audit was the one that can't be verified, and then the second audit wasn't.
Second, or 19, 20, 21. Right, the only thing I want to add to that audit was.
What do you have?
Go ahead.
Does that, so what will happen in a second? These programs won't count against you, these programs will only help you. It's very easy for all of you and all of your residents to look and show what transpired in the last couple of years and say, well, that's the way it should have happened. We're taking it in a good direction, we want to do A, B, C, and D. So, and then anytime you apply for any of the state stuff, we can help. We can use us as, what's the word we said?
Tools.
Yeah, you can use us as tools.
I love that, so I'd like to open the floor.
I have another question.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Gail, please.
That's okay, now, this borough in the past was receiving a great many grants for our community hall, et cetera, et cetera. Now, does this financial health assessment, this mini stamp affect that when we get a viable?
It will help you because all these audits that have been flagged would hold you back from getting the grant. So because you're gonna have this done, that will help you get.
Well, the road grants were very well forthcoming from what we gleaned from the past council, but I'm talking about grants, say, if we move forward eventually to have a viable borough building, municipal building, and grants that we might have needed as we did for the Hall of Ball field, all of those come under our purview. And I just wondered, does this exclude us from applying for that?
That's not.
Once all of this audit nonsense. Now, the reason that Jack never received information is because he was the mayor and the mayor, and it sort of bypassed him and went to the council president, okay.
You know, when we've held, Jason was council for two years, or one year loose council member. And the other thing I want to add to that is that there was an elected auditor that was elected within his six years, so he still had five years left, but they excluded him from it. And as the president said, if he had gave them, him the paperwork, we would have did the full audit.
Okay, so I think that all those things are going to be looked into, and we're gonna get lots of new grants. Gail, you may, you may find yourself on the committee. I'd like to open the floor to motions.
I make a motion we involve in financial health assessment.
Is there a second? Jared, how would you vote? Okay, there was a motion made and seconded to apply for the financial, financial assessment program? Kristin?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes unanimously. I'll follow up with you tomorrow.
I'll follow up.
Okay. Thursday.
We're the guy breaking stuff.
Yeah, I'll follow up.
Well, I may live in the air.
I gotta spare room.
I'm going to, I'm going to table the audit assistant item under the discussion that we just had and the motion that passed. I have a budget that I presented to everybody that the council worked on. It's zeroed out.
What about?
I, you know, I need to get a bigger piece of paper. You know, the problem with printing it on two, honestly, is it, it all of a sudden gets really weird and breaks funding and stuff. So I don't think I have it on here.
I have a couple of questions about financial.
Sure, and I want to correct the discussion on the budget with the fact that we are required to have a budget, and we are already, because of actions of prior council, we are already behind the eight ball on this. So as responsible citizens of the borough, we need to get a budget put together with the, with the knowledge that we just applied for a program to help us financially, and then we can amend and adjust the budget as we have more clarity on our financial situation.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, please ask your question.
So this one, 403.20 tax collector of a charge, what is that?
I have to put a number here.
403.20, tax collector of a charge, eighty dollars, what is that?
Did Donna, did Donna, was it a bill for like angry like that or anything?
Or stamps?
He's never. He no longer mails anything out, they take care of the all.
Well, they get, they send them.
Some of the.
Does anyone that wants to be.
A prior.
Okay.
Yeah, I will say.
I was just curious.
I know, we didn't have last year's budget, so we're barely going back to 21 budget.
My guess also, I know they have, does it have tax bond on there?
Yeah, tax, if you have tax collector com, so and then, I don't know if that is a, tax collector bond and then tax collector other charge.
Yeah, my, I believe that's probably a carryover from the 21 budget that I used as a template. And it's probably for.
Okay, another question I had is 409.36, community hall electric? We don't own the community hall, right?
Um, I believe, I believe that would transfer over to the church.
For, to pay the electric for the church?
Yeah, I believe that's in the contract, electric. Partial electric and partial heating again.
I knew the heat, yeah. So when it's this community hall, we're talking about the church?
Correct.
Okay.
Because, because as a public municipal building, it should no longer be a church.
No, I understand.
It should be the community building.
Do you have to have a contract that would read?
I do, actually.
I don't have the books for it now.
All right, yeah, if you, if, I will, you stay at the meeting, I'll give you my email. I have a new borough email, and I will send it to you. Perfect.
And then one more question for under revenue, 362.41, community hall rental?
Yes.
Again, are you talking about the church?
Correct.
It was my understanding that. That we.
Oh, no, no, I added that, I added that, yes, that the contract currently states that any donations made to the use of the social room would go to the Sturrock Baptist Church organization. I am not sure that's 100% legal with the First Amendment of the Constitution. And so I put this in as a potential income that we may generate.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we wouldn't generate it because it has to go back to the church, unless the contract leaves.
Unless the contract is bound to be, it'll leave that part of the contract.
So I think we should accept this budget with the understanding that we can revise it as more information comes in.
Yeah, we need to, first, we need to advertise it, so. We should accept it.
I have a motion.
For at least 10 days. That's the requirement we have to advertise.
Yeah, 10 days, yeah, 10 days.
But that's recent, with it.
Pardon?
Yeah, that's physical copy.
So. We can, we can place it on this building. Do we need to advertise it in the paper?
Yes.
Okay, so then we would also advertise this budget in the tri-county independent. I don't know, Jack, if you want to.
Put that, yeah, add to your motion, whoever made the motion, add that entirely.
Or you make a motion, I'll read, send my motion.
No, no, just add that, right here, motion, just add it up, the way you found me.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we advertise this budget for 10 days and put it down to the borough building. Both borough buildings, this one and the one over there, just to be safe.
I said.
Jared, how do you vote?
Jared, yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
I vote yes, motion passes unanimously. So there's the budget, and then finally, I have a contract for the rental of this building for 2023. And I apologize, I didn't send out copies to everybody. I know. Oh, you know what, I might. I don't know, I have two copies, there's one for you. Start down here. You guys can like share. Should I read the contract down?
Yeah.
So I didn't compare, we should bring it up.
I don't have MRIs. Mr. Gallardo, Sturrock, Sturrock Borough Council would like to continue the rental of the building you own at 316 Sturrock Creek Road, Sturrock, Pennsylvania, 18462, for the regularly scheduled and special meetings of the council for the calendar year 2023 at a rate of $30 per month. The council also requests that the contract may be terminated by either party at any time of the 30-day written notice. Additionally, the council would like to continue to make use of the walk-in freezer in the kitchen area for storage of borough records. This location would be locked with access limited to the secretary and president of the council. Additional accommodations will be made to allow access to any items that you may have stored in this location at any time of the year by contacting the president or secretary. If you agree to these terms, please return and sign a copy of the letter addressed above. Two are included, one for your records, one to return to the council.
I have a question, should you include that contract that this is the only place for the borough?
I don't think that's connected.
I'm just.
Yeah, no, the building, so the building's owned by Tom, and it's rented separately to be. In the past, the election board would always.
Yes, I have a question regarding the church, the fellowship room. The contract, the one I saw, the first one, said they were responsible for shoveling the sidewalks and handicap ramp. So when do we actually, how do we know what the electric's gonna work out? Are we on the bill already? How do we know what we're paying?
My recollection is from a meeting or two ago, Kirk Run stated that the borough is not on the electrical bill yet. I have a copy of the contract here, I'm not flowing in everything.
They don't want to take surprises.
Well, they didn't shovel, they didn't shovel for Christmas, they just went through the back.
I put a call into Attorney Grechter, just see if we can get all the final paperwork and the bills, and haven't received nothing back, and Solicitor Bujay assured me today that he was going to contact the inverter to see where we could get the final paperwork back. We've got to get, we've got to get the paperwork to know where we are at.
Will some of that be available to the public?
Yeah. I'm going to make extraordinary efforts to make as much information as possible available to the public, both physically and digitally.
Thank you.
That's one of my goals for 2023. All right, so I would like to entertain a motion to accept this contract to be sent to Tom. Is there any discussion?
I make a motion to accept this contract, if you want to.
Any seconds? Jared? Kristin?
Yes.
Gail?
Yes.
Yeah.
Jared?
Yes.
All right, motion, I, I, motion passes unanimously, we'll send this contract to Tom, it's signed. So we have a meeting place here, and we'll include that in the advertisement for the, thanks. All right, so I know we had a little bit of public comment in there, but I'd like to open the floor up to public comment.
I gave a letter to Jack, a letter intent to be seen as the seventh councilman.
Excellent, we will review that at the January 3 meeting when we agree correspondence.
I just wanted to be.
No, absolutely, thank you very much, we appreciate your interest. Any other public comments?
I do have one question about electricity, get back there. Because you said I read the original contact, contract, I don't know what's changed in it, but in that contract, they said the borough was only allowed to use that building once a month. So it is not a borough building. So if you have to pay electricity, you pay it for one day?
So, so those are very interesting questions, and this council will dig deeper into the legality of all the contracts.
Like I said, it was the original contract, so I don't know what's changed, I don't know. That looks like what I had.
No worries.
Ray, is the borough responsible if they don't shovel the sidewalks, ramp, or handicap ramp? Someone gets hurt, we are responsible for that?
Yes, well.
The contract said that was their responsibility. We were to plow and cinder, and they would be to shovel. That was in the first contract?
Yes, and I believe the borough is only responsible for plowing when we are going to use the building.
Okay, so.
I understand.
They were supposed to do the shoveling, sidewalk, and handicap ramp.
Yeah, I, I have to review the contract in detail.
Depends on which contract you review. Well, I don't think those parts of the contract changed.
No, no, they were just, they added a couple clauses.
The clauses were all.
My understanding is when it comes to a lawsuit, anybody listed its ownership, anybody that uses it, and anybody's name they can get will go on that lawsuit. I was involved in a couple of lawsuits with Oates Elevator, and that's the way it was. Lawyers come in and say, okay, who made it, the equipment? Who maintains it, and who owns it now? And all three parties will sit on a lawsuit. So that's something to consider.
As long as somebody tripped on a sidewalk and sued them, and they got, they won.
Yes.
So as long as your name is on the deed, you will be holding to the lawsuit.
Yeah, and, you know, their name is on the contract for management, and I know that. I know that the insurance company was notified of the ownership of the building, and so that we are covered as far as that's concerned, and I'm gonna reach out to them tomorrow as well. Gail, did you have one last comment?
I have a question, yes. Someone just stated that the contract states we're responsible for plowing and cinder when we're going to use the building. Is that a fact?
I think the contract.
No, I haven't, I haven't read it in a few months, or a couple of weeks at least.
Yeah.
So it does say we are responsible for plowing, and they are responsible for.
Oh, so overall, so that, okay, we need to clarify that because it was.
Once, yes, we do, once Jim helps us to get the finances started, and the secretary bridge to help us get going, and help us find a solicitor who's willing to come out to this borough and help correct some of these issues, we will definitely, absolutely do that. And, and I will make sure, as president, that everyone in the community and the council are informed as to what is going on, and has access to all the public records that they are allowed to have access to. All right, with that, I'm gonna, uh, adjourn the meeting. We have a, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting, you have a second? Jared? Okay, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you everybody for coming. And I wanna, I wanna make a special thank you to Charles for taking the minutes tonight, at last minute. We really appreciate that, and they send Jim for coming up. Are you guys gonna rush out, or you have five minutes? Eight minutes.
Very.